For Tuesday, 20, clerk?
11, our present, your honor, with Alder Johnson may be late.
Very good. We have a quorum and we will proceed. Will now please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by Alder Steyer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands.
Indivisible, justice, liberty, justice for all.
Alder Steyer, you're muted.
It was one of my best readings. All right, here we go. Let's try it again. Lord, as we maneuver through the heart of the summer during this pandemic, give us the strength to reach each other through acts of kindness and understanding, regardless of our political ideologies, our ethnic roots, or our religious beliefs. As city leaders, as city administrators, and as city employees, let us look for ways to engage our citizens safely in order that customer service will always be emphasized. May the voices of the citizens who voted for us and pay our taxes always be heard to ensure the success of the city of Green Bay now and into the future. We do this and pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Alder. Amen. Approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Vanderleest. Any corrections that need to be made? Seeing no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? You guys have it. The minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion made by Alder Stevens. Any changes? Seeing no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay? The agenda before you has been approved. For the report by the mayor. So we have a few things in front of us tonight that I just wanted to briefly comment on. First one's coming up pretty quickly, the term sheet on our Gorman Development on Monroe Avenue, something that our RDA blessed on Tuesday and looking for council support again tonight. Something that council has been supportive in the past, now just kind of penciling in some of those financial details. I'm very excited about the project. I think it's a really great partnership between the city, Gorman, Neighbor Works, offering some workforce housing and a downtown grocery store, something that the community has been clamoring for some time. So asking for council support on that item tonight. We also have a declaration of racism as a public health crisis brought forward thanks to the leadership of Alder Corpus Dax and Alder Gerlach. To me, it's self-evidently true that racism is a public health issue and crisis. So I think it's important to make that declaration. I think it's also important for council and for this office to act on that, to enact policies that both acknowledge the fact that racism is bad for people's health and also offer positive public policies that improve people's lives in this community. So I'm thankful to the Alders that have brought that forward, thankful to the community leaders and members who have brought that to the table for us and advocated for it at protection and policy. So hoping that council will follow through on the recommendation of our committee and adopt that declaration this evening. Also have some, I think, pretty big news on the Bay Beach front. Just wanted to acknowledge all of the work that was done by Director Ditchite and park staff, as well as the Friends of Bay Beach and our council in coming together and supporting a plan that continues to move forward with the restoration of the beach, but changes a bit of the phasing based on Mother Nature's plans. I'm still very enthusiastic about the importance of restoring a swimmable beach. I think it'll be a huge community amenity, but not just for city residents. I think it'll be a regional draw all across northeastern Wisconsin. So pleased with what's been put forward by all the parties that I mentioned and again, asking for council support on that item tonight. Finally, just wanted to offer a note of thanks to our clerk and clerks, city employees, community members, including Alders who helped out with our primary election on August 11th. I think it was a good dry run for what we'll see in November. I know that we learned a few things. Alders that participated and witnessed the process have some suggestions and recommendations. And I know that those will be incorporated as we move forward towards November. But just again, wanted to thank everybody who participated and volunteered, and of course, voters for coming out and exercising their right to vote. So with that, that concludes my report and we are on to announcement.
Mayor?
Yes, Alder Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing, I'm not able to log into Civic Clerk. Just a heads up, still have to do my votes verbally tonight. I do want to acknowledge that tonight is Dr. Vonck's last meeting.
Just so you know, Alder, you've got recognitions and awards coming up just after this.
Okay, and that's fine, and I'll let you guys do that. I just want to at least publicly extend my personal acknowledgement for the opportunity to learn from him over the years. And obviously, that's going to be a tremendous loss for the city and a great opportunity for a new person coming in. So again, first, just a personal acknowledgement for the opportunity to have worked with him over the last few years. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alder. Other announcements?
Alder Steyer, your stand is up.
Alder Steyer, go ahead.
I saw today in history that 100 years ago today, American women won the right to, I think you all saw that. So there you go. Kudos to you all.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alder. Others? Yes, Alder Lefebvre, go ahead.
Yes, alluding to your racist nonsense, this is a county thing. I do get the county newspaper and they have a resolution where it declares racism a national public health crisis. I thought you want to know that this is through the county association, it's all the counties in the United States. It's a national one. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that, Alder. Any other announcements? Okay, with that, we will move along to recognitions and awards. We do have somebody to recognize this evening in Dr. Kevin Vonck, who is sadly, very sadly, leaving the city. Very excited for his family, though, and the opportunity of him out in Richmond, Virginia. I believe Dr. Vonck had been for around five years and it has been, I think, sort of an tenure in the history of development directors here in Green Bay. A lot of successes that Director Vonck has been a part of and has been really seeing through. A lot of irons in the fire that he continues to tend to up until the last moment. He and I had a number of discussions earlier today. So just incredibly thankful to him and the work that he has done. You know, he is a consummate professional, you know, just somebody who is incredibly talented and intelligent. And in addition to that, you know, just leads with a real sense of decency. And I know that I speak for everybody, and certainly will give Alders the opportunity to chime in here as well, but speak for everybody, you know, city staff, community members, everybody who's ever had the opportunity to interact with Director Vonck in thanking him for his service to the city and wishing him nothing but great luck and success and all the best to his family as they take on this new adventure out on the East Coast. So thanks so much for everything, Kevin, and congratulate each unity. Invite other folks to chime in with their recognition. Alder Dorf.
Thank you. Dr. Vonck, you certainly have been a shining star. You've taught me so much and I'm kind of worried if I forget what a pay-go is. I'm not really sure how I'll ever find out again, but you give the best explanation to me of what that was. I always admired your professionalism, even in the face of a controversial council that we had a few years ago. You always took the high road. You always were respectful. You always had great answers and your leadership has been phenomenal. And you're really going to be missed. Take care, and I do like your bowtie.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Steyer.
Thank you, your honor. I mimic those statements by Alder Dorf as well. I had the opportunity to work in a planning office for 25 years, so I've known quite a few of the planning directors over time. And Kevin, you've been very knowledgeable, very professional. And again, you always answered our questions and in timely fashion as well. So thank you very much for that. And like Alder Dorf said, your bowtie does look good. I don't know if I'll ever be able to ever wear one because you kind of ruined it for all of us. It looks better on you than on us. So thank you. Godspeed and good luck in Richmond, Virginia with you and your family.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments from council? Alder Scannell.
Just, I'll have more later tomorrow, or Thursday. But just quickly and publicly, kudos to you and thank you. You've been a great done a lot of great work for the city and it's very much appreciated. So, and I've learned a lot from you and that took, I know, a lot out of you. And I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Alder Galvin.
Your honor, and Dr. Vonck, again, I have to say a repeat of just everything. You've taught me so much. You've been very patient with me and my questions and my lack of understanding of a lot of the inner workings of how economic development works for the city. I think you've done a fantastic job for our community. You really will be sorely missed here. I think you've got a good crew and hopefully they can continue things forward as you have for us. We're going to miss you. We're going to miss you a lot. And I will have to say that your dignity and demeanor in the face of adversity and some of the comments you've had to endure over the years, your ability to keep your cool, really greatly appreciated and a credit to our city, but also very much so to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments from council? All right.
Mayor, if I have an opportunity to just speak for a moment?
Absolutely. Dr. Vonck.
Thanks. Well, right, I've been holding it in for like five years, so I'm just going to like let loose now. Everything I've been holding back right underwater, so. Last meeting, let it all out, right? No, I just, look, I wanted to say, you know, thank you very much. It's been a great ride. Yeah, I start later at the end of this month, Deputy Planning Director for City Richmond, Virginia. You know, it's a really great opportunity for me, you know, looking to work in a larger city. You know, deep history, great culture, lots of potential. I mean, you see a lot of similarities to Green Bay. Chances are, you know, I probably won't be the only one in the room wearing a bowtie from now on, moving to the south. But look, I mean, I just, I really appreciate, you know, the consideration that you've given me. You know, I really worked hard to bring you, as council, the best possible information, the best possible informed decisions that you can. Many times, complex, contentious, conflicting issues. But I think you know that, you know, I brought this from the heart and really, you know, wanted to do what was best for the city and its residents. I'm super proud of what our department has accomplished and the city's accomplished over the last few years. Yes, I've been like a face for things, but like I have an awesome team, you know, behind me who's really, you know, done the work to get a lot of these things done. You know, we've done some amazing things in the city, things probably you thought, you know, people in Green Bay never thought would be done. And, you know, very, very excited about that. So, you know, originally, yes, I was brought on board by Mayor Schmidt. I appreciate you, Mayor Genrick, you know, providing the opportunity to continue to serve in your administration. You know, I really enjoyed, again, working with you personally and the rest of this council to move the city forward. As I said, we've got a nice, a lot of talented employees and I'm super confident, you know, that the department and the city will continue to accomplish great things. And, you know, I wish nothing but the best for the city. So thank you.
Thanks so much. On to appointments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to confirm the new appointments. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? You guys have it. The item has been approved. On to ordinances, second reading for adoption.
Motion to suspend the rule.
May under suspension of the rules, take up items one through five with the roll call vote.
Second, Randy.
Then a motion made to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. A motion was made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to suspend the rules.
Here, can we pull number two?
Sure. Alder Scannell, would you like to make a different motion?
A motion to accept number two from the, how many other? Five? Five ordinances.
Alder Scannell makes a motion, still seconded by Alder Dorf.
Yes.
To approve ordinances one, three, four, and five with one roll call vote. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? The ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion now to
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf to adopt items K1, K3, K4, K5. And Alders will please use the board.
Mayor, I vote yes.
Alder.
Mine's not coming up.
Mine either.
It's up now. Mine.
Mine came up and went away.
I did it.
I can vote aye. I'll vote aye.
Waiting on Alder Burnett?
Um, yes, it didn't come up on my screen.
Mine came up three times now. Should I keep voting or?
You get one.
Oh, darn it.
Right, and those items pass 11-0. Now back to K2.
Move to approve.
Second.
Made to approve by Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell. Alder Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Off topic real quick, the mayor, I apologize on my comments regarding Dr. Vonck. I didn't realize that's how that item was going to happen, otherwise I would have waited. So more so a question. In this, in this particular item, and I apologize for not catching us at the last meeting, but we actually have the fees outlined within this ordinance. And I was under the presumption that we were migrating towards a process that was going to address fees annually by resolution. So staff on that?
Yeah, good question. Attorney Chavez?
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Alder. So the reason those are still appearing in the ordinance is because the resolution is coming as part of the meeting code codification. I'm about 200 pages into the comments so we can get finalized. And so until that is actually finalized, the resolution won't be ready for us to take that adoption. But once we move through the resolution process, these will be pulled out of the ordinance and put in there.
Okay, great. That's a good enough explanation for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, it's been motion has been made to adopt and seconded will use the board.
Alder Johnson is a yes.
Alder Steyer is a yes.
Totally broke it. I apologize, my screen is still circling. Kim, are you able to read the vote?
I don't, I'm not actually into the clerk.
Let me hop into Civic Clerk, see if I can do that.
I'm in Civic Clerk. What are you trying to do?
I'm trying to see the vote and it is not showing up. I'm going to run it one more time. I apologize.
If we're not able to pull it up, I could go through a roll call real quickly. If that works, Attorney Chavez?
Yes, that is an option.
Okay. Alder Dorf?
I'm just waiting on Alder Stevens and Burnett. Everybody else has voted.
My yes, it didn't come up.
Mine didn't come up. But mine's a yes.
It is. Those pass 12-0. On to the report of the redevelopment authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve Report L, which is a report of the redevelopment authority in the meeting on August 11th, 2020. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
Item three.
Item one.
Items one and three will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report?
Aye.
Aye.
Close nay? You guys have it. The report has been approved with the exception of items one and three. Your wishes on item one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Item was pulled by Alder Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I've I've got a couple of questions and unfortunately I couldn't connect with Dr. Vonck beforehand. And I just, I think we should probably go into closed session because I'm not sure if they're sensitive to the negotiation. So I'll move that we go into closed session. Do you need me to speak the language?
Before you do that, Alder, can we go into closed on both items?
Yeah. I was going to ask to do that.
Okay.
If I could make that, I would do that.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made to go into closed session for both items one and three. Motion's been made by Alder Johnson, seconded by Alder Scannell. Can someone re-
The council may convene in closed session pursuant to section 19.85 subsection 1, subsection 8, Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating or negotiating the sale of public properties invested in a public fund or conducting other specified public business is necessary for competitive or bargaining reasons. The council thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.85 subsection 2, Wisconsin statutes, take action on items discussed in closed session if appropriate and to consider the remainder of the
Thank you, Alder.
Okay, Mayor, I'm just going to need some time to put people in waiting rooms.
Right. And we do need to use the board on the closed session.
Okay.
Alder Johnson?
Uh, yes.
Alder Burnett?
Yes. By the way, I signed out and tried signing back in. Hopefully that helps.
All right, that vote is successful on a unanimous ballot. 12-0. Ms. Jeffrey's just let us know when we are in closed.
Mayor, this is the one where Executive Strachanbach should be in. Is that correct?
The, um, well, since we're going in on both, just wait until we get to item three.
Okay, and then I, I will
Mayor, you can take them in any order. So if you want to take the one that requires additional people, you can do that one first and then it'll be easier to kick them out.
Okay. Sounds good. Why don't, why don't we do that then if that's all right with Alders?
And then Brian, I'm assuming that Brian is Alder Johnson?
Yes, I'm here.
Are you also Brian?
So I, I think that that is not, okay. Let me just give one more look.
Okay, so Alder, Alder Johnson, you are both Alder Johnson and then Brian for audio. Is that right?
No, I'm only signed in once.
Yeah, so there's somebody else named Brian. I figured that out. Thank you.
Celestine, could you, for number, to talk about number three, can you bring back in Cheryl?
Yes.
And Matt Buchanan, please?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. We are good.
Great. All right. Well, I'll just kind of kick things
Okay, we are live again recording. I will let everyone back in.
Great. We'll entertain a motion.
Move to go back into open session.
Second.
So I can, Alder Dorf, seconded by Alder Scannell to reconvene in open session. All in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay? You guys have it. We are back in open session. I'll entertain a motion on item one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Actually, yeah, we don't need, the motion was already made to approve the report, correct?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Isn't it motion to, staff to proceed as directed?
Well, that was, that was the motion in-
Three?
Yep, that's already in there from the report. And item one is just approving the term sheet, so I think we're okay.
But we didn't approve item one, we pulled it. So we pulled it before we approved the report. We still do need to approve it, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Aldo Scannell, and it was seconded.
I'll second it.
Aldo LaFave.
Or Aldo LaFave.
To approve item one. Any discussion in open? Seeing none, all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay, you guys have it, onto item three, entertain a motion to proceed as directed.
Motion to proceed as directed.
Second.
Motion made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Dorf. Any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Nay, you guys have it, and we are on to INS.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Dorf to approve Report M, which is a report of the Improvement in Services Committee, from the meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately?
Number three.
Three, any others? Item three will be handled separately, hearing none others, and all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Report has been approved, with the exception of item three. Your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Dorf, item three was pulled by Aldo Weary on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, my apologies for this meeting, I got stuck out of town in St. Louis, bringing my daughter to college, so there's a little more discussion that needs to be done here, so I just make the motion to refer back.
Motion was made to refer back to committee, that was seconded by Aldo Steyer, any discussion? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. You guys have it, the item has been referred back to committee. Onto protection policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Stevens, to approve Report M, which is a report of Protection Policy Committee, from the meeting on August tenth, twenty twenty. Any items here to be handled separately?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. And hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay, you guys have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item thirteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo LaFave, item was pulled by Aldo Weary, Aldo on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my question is, in reading the, the item to approve a joint in the Alder Corpus Dax for the city of Green Bay to sign on to the resolution passed by the Wisconsin Public Health- In, in looking at the attachments for, from committee, there was a, there were two items, one was a statement from Alder Gerlach, and the other one was a, something from the Wisconsin Healthiest State Initiative, kind of a supporting document, but I didn't see the resolution that, and I don't see it under our resolutions. Is this something that's coming back to committee?
Alder Gerlach or Alder Corpus Dax?
Am I muted? No.
Go ahead.
So, thank you, Mayor, this is something that we're signing on to, it's not a resolution within the state, or within the city itself. So we don't have, we as a city don't have a resolution.
Okay, and then I appreciate that, that's, that's good to know, but there is no attachment for what we're signing on to as far as their resolution, that I can see, unless I missed it. We're signing on to their resolution, but nowhere is it-
It's there, it's in there, it's, you have to click on it, it's W P H A, it's under declaration, and you can see the full declaration.
But as far as attachments, I, I don't know if it's properly noticed, would it be if there's just a link? And I understand maybe that's for attorney, all that was in the attachment, this and this. I don't know if we have to require people down links, you know, to go somewhere, I'm just wondering, the resolution's not there to, to look at. But I don't know what we're signing on to.
So, I mean, it is accessible to Alders and the public to click on that link and, and read through.
Sorry, is that agreeable with our city attorney? If you could just provide a link, you don't have to actually put what we're signing on to in, in there?
The agenda, the requirement for open meetings compliance is to provide adequate notice to the public of what's being considered, as long as what is provided identifies where it's available, that's all that is required.
And I, I did have a question regarding adequate funding, I know there was some mentioning of providing adequate funding. Can anybody describe what, what adequate is? Ade, I think it's allocate adequate financial and human resources.
What are you referring to, Alder?
Whoever wants to answer it.
Well, I will make an attempt to answer that.
Aldo Gerlach, go ahead.
Thank you. As I read this, my understanding is, and of course I came late to the game, but my understanding is that you have approved a position for coordinator of diversity and inclusion, and as I read these items, these, I feel confident would fall under the, the purview of that person, and that position has been funded, right?
That's correct.
That's what I see as the adequate funding.
All right, appreciate it.
Thanks, Alder. Aldo Weary, you still on the floor?
That's all I have for now, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Alder. Any further discussion on the item? Okay. You do have a motion and a second, so all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. You guys have it, and the motion is, onto item O, report of the Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Did you get a second?
Yeah.
Okay, second, I didn't hear there was a-
Motion made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Van Der Leece to approve Report O, which is the report of Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Any names for what you'd like to be recorded as abstaining? Any names under this report you wish to handle separately?
I, I have one.
Aldo Steyer?
Misty Bureau, B E R O.
Very good, that is noted. All in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. You guys have it, the report has been approved. I, I apologize, Aldo Steyer, with Misty Bureau, was that a request for abstaining or handling, handling separately?
Well, I, I know the person, so is that a problem, as far as okaying that?
You just want to be noted as abstaining, potentially?
Yes, now I'll abstain.
Okay, sounds good. So that's been noted, and the item has been approved, report of the Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Gerlach, Aldo Dorf, rather, to approve Report P, which is the report of the Plan Commission, from the meeting on August tenth, twenty twenty. Any items under this report to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 You guys have it, the report has been approved, report of the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Dorf, to approve Report Q, which is a report of the Finance Committee, from the meeting on August twenty twenty. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number two.
Number three, Mayor.
Three. Any others? Items two and three will be handled separately, hearing none others, all in favor approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay, you guys have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of items two and three.
Motion to approve item two.
Second. Made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Galvin, was that item pulled by Aldo Van Der Leece?
Yes.
Aldo, you on the floor?
Thank you, I just wondered, was that a one-year contract for the, the words for the appraisal service, is that a one-year contract?
Director Allen Becker, you want to give an overview of some of those details?
Sure, it is actually, it is a contract for one, one revaluation, and it is expected to take about two and a half years, so the contract is for one full evaluation.
That's for the entire city of Green Bay, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question, thank you very much.
Alder, any other questions or comments? All right, see, can you speak, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay, you guys have it, the item has been approved, on item three, Aldo-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Dorf, that was pulled, I believe, by Aldo Burnett?
That's correct.
Go ahead, Alder.
I just, I know we have a resolution later in the agenda, but I want to make sure that, when we were talking about how we're going to adjust our budget as a city as a whole, to account for some of the COVID issues we're dealing with, I, I remember at one point we said we were gonna take, or projected take a hundred thousand from the contingency fund to cover, you know, offset the deficit. Director Allen Becker, has that changed, you know, as we look at our projection for the rest of the year, the year we take fifty from the contingency fund for this?
Yes, that was, that was definitely something that we had mentioned, but the last projection I had brought to you, we were able to make up, with that possible use of contingency, we were able to overcome all the shortages and revenues by over, there was over a hundred fifty thousand extra projected at that time. I certainly look to bring another projection sometime in September of where we think we're gonna end the year. That was a suggestion, but we didn't need all of that, we do believe that we were going to be fine in making up our revenues.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that item?
Yes. Your honor?
Yes?
Go ahead, Alder.
Okay, just, how much is in our contingency fund now?
You know, I have those numbers in front of me, it was sitting at one. By the time we make, there, there's several transfers on here, that will bring us down to right around, I think right, it was gonna be right around eighty thousand dollars is where the contingency was gonna be after we made these transfers that are listed in the packet tonight.
Okay, and then, if I remember right, wasn't, wasn't it our contingency fund was one of the thing that Moody's dinged us on for lowering our, our bond rating?
Not our contingency, contingency is just a, an account or an item, line item within our budget, and we put about a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand in that line item, it is just an account number, it is not a, a fund, so no, that is not something that Moody's would dinge us on.
Okay, well, that's all for me now, thanks.
Any others? All right, you know, requests to speak, all in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay, you guys have it, the item has been approved, report of the Park Committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Dorf, to approve Report R, which is the report of the Park Committee, from the meeting on August twelfth, twenty twenty, any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Report has been approved, personnel.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Steyer. So we just got the one item there, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay. Item has been approved, Public Arts.
Motion to approve.
Made by Aldo Dorf, seconded by Aldo Scannell, to approve Report T, which is a report of the Public Arts Commission, from the meeting on July twenty second, twenty twenty. Any items here to be handled separately? All in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay, you guys have it, the report has been approved. BP.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to, motion to approve, made by Aldo Dorf, seconded by Aldo Stevens, approving Report U, which is a report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, from the meeting on July twenty, twenty twenty. Any items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nay, you guys have it, the report has been approved. Ad-Hoc Committee on Elections.
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve, made by Aldo Scannell, seconded by Aldo Dorf. Prove Report V, which is a report of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Elections, from the meetings on July twenty third and August thirteenth, twenty twenty. Any items here to be handled separately?
Number two.
Item two. Item two will be handled separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. You guys have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of item two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Aldo Dorf, item two was pulled by Aldo Galvin, the other floor.
Thank you, your honor, I looked through, I watched most of the, the meeting, and I was kind of surprised that the suggestions in this document were all tabled. My wife and I spent fourteen hours at one of the polling locations, and many of these suggestions here seem pretty common sense, easy to implement, and of little or no cost at all to the city, and so I was just kind of surprised, I mean, I'll, I'll take the ones that, that I saw, things could be done. When someone has a ballot, it's put into a folder, and the ones we had were opaque, so you can't see how they voted, and then it's carried up to the, the electronic box where it's fed into and it's recorded. Those were being wiped down after everyone touched it to, you know, erase any kind of chance of defamation. Now, the ones we had were cardboard, they started to get wet and soggy, and the suggestion here is that we get some plastic or vinyl ones that are easy to wipe down and resistant to liquid. The use of the three-ring binders for the voting list. I'll be honest with you, I didn't get much action with that, because I was assigned to one spot for the whole fourteen hours and never got over to the table where they had that, that spot, so I didn't get much interaction with that, but again, this seems pretty commonplace. The coffee thing, I'll, I'll skip that, the brightly colored vinyl tape, I thought that was part of every standard equipment box, because we had painter's tape, blue painter's tape, and a, a tape measure, and members of the group there went out, we did six-foot measurements, we put down arrows, we put down Xs for people to stand, it was real simple, it was real easy, we had it done before the polls opened, and as soon as they closed, we removed those. The one-two-three things, we had so few voters at ours, I don't know if that's, if we're not, but again, it seemed like a good idea. Offer people with no mask curbside voting, and we did have a couple people that told us that they don't believe in masks, and that the state law says they don't have to wear a mask when they're voting. We did have an issue, I was at the Curative Center, they have a lot of at-risk individuals who attend that as part of their job and or training, and things like that, and the staff at Curative was very concerned, and so the clerk made a decision that anyone without a mask there, and did not want to wear a mask, we had some people avail themselves the mask that we offered them, but they were told they'd have to go to curbside, because they didn't want to put them at risk. I think that, you know, I don't know, I guess I would have to ask the Law Department or someone to contact the state to see if it's legal for us to insist that people who don't want to wear a mask while voting have the option of voting curbside only, I don't know. So, I mean, we were told that the, the people that- I don't know, so, I mean, we were told that, uh, the, the people that, we had two that refused and they were allowed to vote, so I'm not sure what the, uh, the end result would be on that. I would have liked just a little bit more training, um, it was good for us to sit there, at least I got to watch what other people were doing and pick it up from there. Um, have a designated person in charge, um, there were two people that were in charge, one of each of the wards while we were there. One was very much in charge and anything to do, any questions with her ward, she took care of. Uh, but I'd have to say with the ward I was in, there was, if there was someone in charge, anytime there was any kind of an issue, that person never stepped. So we were kind of left kind of floundering, so it'd be nice to have someone to go to, um, that would be the arbiter of any disputes or questions or things like that. Uh, because we had someone come as an observer, he refused to identify himself, uh, until some phone calls were made and, and that got that handled. Um, our, our entrance way was pretty well, you know, set up with signs and that. Um, but the cleaning, uh, was something that we actually had someone assigned to follow voters as they went through and clean, um, their pens and the places they touched and the voting booths, in fact, uh, our voting booths apparently hadn't been cleaned for years, and after our cleaner got through cleaning it, someone commented they thought we had been, uh, that we had new voting booths because they'd never seen them look like that before. Um, so, I mean, having that kind of material there for us to use for cleaning, I, I think it is a must, and I think someone should get time to do that. Um, and so the shifts are not, I don't know, that's, that's something, I guess, I believe, again, I'd leave that up to the clerk, but I'm just kind of, you know, surprised that some of these, none of these suggestions taken up, and again, like I said, they're simple, they're easy, there's almost no cost associated with them. Um, the people that were working, they were more than willing to do those, some of those jobs and duties, uh, without any question. Um, so I, I just, I, I would like to, uh, actually have this referred back to the committee and see if some of these things can be relooked at and possibly implemented for November, we've got two and a half months. Um, from everything I'm hearing, things went well, but you know, I think November's gonna be a much busier time with a lot more people, and I think the more we can do to protect everybody and make it run faster and better, um, is something that we should look to do, thank you.
Get those comments and, and as I said in my mayor's report, appreciate all those suggestions as well, uh, especially from alders who participated and volunteered, um, working the polls on, on August eleventh, um, any additional comments or questions?
Your honor.
Alder Scannell, go ahead.
Uh, Alder Galvin, were you making a motion to refer back?
I, yes, that's, I, I would make a motion to refer back.
Well, uh, before I second it, I'd like to know why, if someone, uh, could answer why some of those things were tabled. Um, there must have, was there no discussion on, on that at all, or, I mean, I don't, um, it'd be good to get a little.
Clerk Teskey is not on the Zoom tonight, um, I could refer to our deputy clerk in Wade, if she's interested in weighing in, otherwise Director Ellen Becker is on the line, of course.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, um, this past Thursday, so I, I don't have any answers because I wasn't there.
I did listen in on the call, uh, but I know Alder Weary was also there, I know Celeste also participated in the meeting, and I think there were actually two other alders also on the line, um, that were Alder Dorf and Alder, um, Grealish, I think they were there, um, I do remember some of these items that they were discussed. In some cases, they thought that there is a kind of mix, I, I, again, going through item by item, you know, some of the things, half the people wanted these three-ring binders, half didn't. Um, at one point, they looked for the vinyl folders, they couldn't find them, doesn't mean we couldn't look for them again. Um, I certainly would actually entertain to see maybe what Alder Weary or one of the alder would say that more participated in the meeting, I kind of sat back and just listened.
Well, and just from my perspective, I think, just before I go to all, other alders, I think it would be helpful to refer back, I mean, it certainly offers us the opportunity to huddle as an administration and, and work through some of these and, um, you know, just identify which items make sense, um, to move forward with and, and which ones, you know, just don't at this stage.
Sure.
Alder Weary or Alder Dorf?
I was gonna second it unless, uh, Alder Scannell did, right? I'll second it, yeah.
Yeah, I support that.
Any further comments?
I have a question.
Alder Grealish, go ahead.
Please explain to me, when you say refer back, what's going to happen then?
So it'll just be revisited at the Ad-Hoc Elections Committee.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Any other discussion, uh, we had a motion to refer back by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder Scannell. There aren't any further comments? All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close may. The guys have it, and it's been referred back. Steven, place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file.
Second.
By Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Stevens, receiving place on file the building permit report for July twenty twenty, and the municipal court report for August twenty twenty, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May, guys have it, report has been received and placed on file. Will be the whole.
Motion to approve.
Second.
By Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to approve.
Okay.
Um, so on that, so that would be to approve item one, we'll just take these individually, um, any discussion? And before we do that, just note that this discussion really would have to be enclosed. Is there an interest in it being closed by any members of council?
I felt comfortable with, with the description that Attorney Chavez gave us, I was personally.
Okay, any, anyone else who would like to, who want to close to discuss? None?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve and a second, so all in favor.
Mayor?
No.
Yes.
The motion we're actually looking for is to release the self-insured retention amount to the insurance carrier.
Right.
So moved.
So that's been, that motion has been made by Alder Steuer.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Scannell. All in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Close may. Guys have it, that motion succeeds, under item two consideration with possible action to fill two battalion chief positions, starting August
Approve.
Twenty twenty?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve by Alder Scannell, seconded by Alder Dorf. Uh, Chief Litten, you are available, just a quick description of why would you want to do this?
Well, I think that, uh, the memo that was included in the packet from, uh, Human Resources Director Folds kind of covered all bases, but just very quickly.
You want to go down to the, to the freezer downstairs and grab?
Alder. Go, go ahead, chief.
We, uh, we have two, uh, battalion chiefs that will be retiring, one in, uh, towards the end of November and the other mid-December. Um, one of them is, uh, gonna be gone for the next three months with, uh, a knee injury that has to be repaired. Uh, and because of that, and, and because of the need to, uh, get the new battalion chiefs in and get them what we call shadow time with, uh, the other remaining battalion chiefs before they actually take over the responsibility of one and a half of the city. Um, we're requesting that they be moved up at the end of the month. Um, the savings, uh, if we have to fill the shift with overtime, it puts an undue burden on the, on the five remaining battalion chiefs, number one. The cost of that is, uh, approximately forty-some thousand dollars versus, uh, promoting the two individuals. Um, one will go to shift, one will go to days, and then they'll alternate that, uh, after a month, uh, we're moving back and forth, uh, that cost is about sixty-three hundred dollars, so, um, it's both a, um, education and, and experience, uh, uh, issue, and it's a, uh, fiscal issue for us, so it's cheaper for us to do what we're requesting.
Very good, thanks to the descriptions, if you have questions or comments on that, Alder Galvin.
Thank you, uh, Chief Litten, so the, the battalion chiefs are, are not the, the party unit, is that correct?
They are not.
Okay, and, but apparently, unlike the police department where those are salaried positions, they get overtime?
Yes.
Okay, and then, these two that are being promoted early, who fills their positions?
We won't, um, those positions will remain open until we, uh, do our hiring, we don't do that, we won't do that until, uh, March of twenty twenty-one, that's when we'll actually start, that will be the first Monday in March. Uh, of course, pending budget approval at the end of the year for the twenty twenty-one budget.
Okay, so in the meantime, are those two positions gonna, what, what, what were their positions, if I might ask?
They're both, uh, filling engineer positions at this point.
Going from engineer, past captain, assistant battalion chief up to battalion chief?
They're going from engineer, passing lieutenants and captains who, uh, basically, when we put the testing, uh, process out, we didn't have any captains or lieutenants, uh, this time around, uh, put their names into the hat for the testing process. Uh, these two individuals went through the process the last time, they, they actually scored at the very top of the list, right behind the, the last two, so they would have been number three and four on the last list. Um, so they're highly qualified, they're ready to go, they're experienced, um, we don't have any issue with, uh, the fact, but, uh, you know, there's, there's, there are reasons why certain people in our organization don't want to move up into the role of battalion chief, uh, number one being that they're leaving the union.
Okay, and then, the, so these two engineers that are leaving, will we have to be paying overtime to other engineers to fill their positions?
Only when we're below minimum man, manning, and so sometimes that, you know, it will occur that we'll have to fill them, uh, but only, but only but when we're below minimum manning.
All right, thank you very much, I'm satisfied.
Yep.
Additional questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
And we've got, we've got a motion and a second on the floor, uh, so all in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 Have it, motion has been approved.
Aye.
Alder Corpus X, if anybody's running to the fridge, I'll take another seltzer.
Sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, I'm thirsty too.
On to, uh, item three, consideration with possible action on the resolution extending the state of emergency for the city of Green Bay COVID-nineteen response.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by Alder Scannell to approve, um, before any discussion, I would just say, the big change here was really prompted by some discussion that we had at our last meeting, um, spearheaded by Alder Galvin and others, um, which relates to item number four as well. But the idea of creating, you know, some kind of gating criteria, to both opening up, you know, city facilities and also tying some of those criteria to the, uh, rescission of an emergency declaration. So that's the, the new language in the, uh, in the proclamation this time around, or the resolution that, uh, will be entertained, um, and the idea, you know, a number of municipalities, including city of DePere, have open-ended, uh, emergency declarations, DePere's is indefinite. Um, but here we thought it was appropriate to say if the, the county is in a low spread situation as designated by Department of Health Services, and we've been in a, a low spread scenario for fourteen days, then the emergency declaration would, would fall away, um, so incorporated that language based on, as I said, some discussion that was had at council. Uh, so with that, uh, any questions or comments?
Your honor.
Alder Galvin, go ahead.
Thank you, and, and I appreciate, uh, your, uh, including this language into it. Um, my quick would be, I would like to make a, a, an add-on or something to either this or at number four, um, informational. Um, reference, uh, the metrics that we're trying to incorporate into this, uh, emergency declaration. And I don't know if it'd be appropriate with number three, or if it'd be more appropriate with number four.
Um, so the item number three really just relates to the emergency declaration?
Okay. And I'm just, so, number four being informational only, though, I guess, um, I'd, I'd like to see something, I, I'll, I'll just lay it out here, you tell me what you think is best, I, I agree with us having the metrics, like the council to be updated every two weeks, um, where the area stands as Wisconsin Department of Health Services sees it, you know, if it's low, medium, or high, and why they see that and where they see the trends going, something, maybe a paragraph that kind of explains what's going on in our community, so that we understand which way we're going. I mean, we, we, we've got a mask mandate in place, with the understanding this was gonna help, I'm hoping to see some changes in the next few weeks, I, I know we're still too early into it, but at the same time, I think then we can tell people when the, what's going on for, we can say, well, loo, look at these metrics, look at these numbers, and an easy to understand, I gotta tell you, I had to read through this several times and try and get a grasp on it. Something easy for us to understand, something easy for the public to understand, so they can see that we are making or not making progress. But just so they know which way we're going, and, and for the council, since, uh, this is only done every week, um, I don't think that's too hard for, you know, maybe the Brown County Health Department, since they oversee this, to do that for us, or, uh, if maybe the Wisconsin Department of Health Services could do that for us also, but I just, I just think it'd be good for everybody involved, from the council on out to the public, uh, to be able to see that Green Bay has, has a goal, and how we're doing reaching that goal, thank you.
Right, no, I appreciate those comments, so, so we do get a report, um, from public health on a daily basis. Um, but I think I'll go to Chief Litten just to, to see if that would be something that, um, that you or one of your assistant chiefs would be able to produce on a, a weekly or bi-weekly basis for council, chief?
Yeah, I, I think we could, uh, just take the reports that we're getting from the county, we're, we're not embedded in the, uh, the, uh, structure anymore, and in fact, they have, now the county has, uh, reduced their staffing on the E O C level, but to compile the numbers that are being seen, I think that, you know, we certainly could do that.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks for that request, Alder, uh, other comments or questions?
Yes, your honor.
I'd like to make a comment, mayor.
Alder Vanderleest, go ahead, and then Alder Scannell.
Uh, I'd just like to know when is the city hall actually gonna get the doors open and, and, uh, they start getting back to normal as far as city operations?
Yeah, so we will get into that a little bit, Director Folds will take us through, um, item four. Alder Scannell?
Thank you. Yeah, uh, I'm very apprehensive about using metrics to automatically, uh, end these, uh, emergency powers, I mean, we could go through, this has been a roller coaster ride all along, i- we could have a lull, a low period, and then all of a sudden have a big spike again. Um, do they automatically come back then, if, are we having metrics where, uh, if it's low, the, uh, emergency powers are suspended, but if something happens, then they're, they're back, or do we have to go through this all over again then, or, uh, how exactly is this gonna work out? I, I would rather actually have it open-ended, and for me, that's not open-ended because it's the council that has to approve everything and also that can end this at any time when we feel it's appropriate, so I don't know that I think anything is really open-ended. Um, and as far as using metrics, they can change, I mean, we could hit a low spot for a month and then boom, hit a big spike and we're back to where maybe some executive action is required immediately, would be helpful immediately. Uh, so if, if, how, how would that work out if that scenario happened?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the comments, and obviously from the executive position, I'd be perfectly satisfied with an indefinite declaration, understanding that ultimately the powers reside with council anyway. Um, but, you know, trying to respond to what we've heard from a number of alders and, um, integrate some of these gating criteria, I, you know, I think it's acceptable to me if, if we were to, to reach low spread and then, you know, unfortunately fall back to, to medium or high, I certainly would have the authority to declare another emergency based on what we're seeing in the community, and then again, you know, would be in council's lap to affirm that declaration.
Oh, okay, all right, all in, that's fine then.
Do you have a question, mayor? I don't know if, if you're ready for me, um, a question to Chief Litten. Um, is the, the county is in a state of emergency, Brown County?
Alder Burden, I honestly do not know the answer to that question at this point, I know that, uh, as I said, that, you know, got a report, situational report from the county every day. Um, most of the ESFs or emergency support functions in the E O C have been, have been decommissioned, certainly by ourselves, but, uh, also by the county, I think there's three or four of the ESFs, their emergency support functions um, still active, so they have, uh, they have reduced their, um, people that are being assigned, you know, directly to supporting, uh, the response at this point, doesn't mean that they're not doing much of things in the background yet, but, uh, they're talking about the logistics section being next to being decommissioned at this point, well, having said that, um, there certainly, there is a plan in place, uh, countywide, within the um, there certainly, there is a plan in place, uh, countywide, within the county, and, and with us to be able to support them, uh, to rapidly be able to, um, escalate that back up, if, if, if we can get a bunch of, uh, cases that pop up, where we have, um, you might have read today that the Green Bay Correctional Facility has had a major uh, outbreak there, um, in Alloway, uh, which obviously our fire department, uh, covers Alloway. Um, so, you know, we, we do have the ability to, to reduce and/or rapidly, uh, expand this thing back to, you know, what we had back in March, April, May, and June, so, um, I, I don't think that it makes any sense to not have the emergency declaration in, in place at this point, just, uh, at the lowest level that we have it at, so that in the event that we have a major, something that turns, uh, very rapidly, that we can respond to it.
Uh, Chief, so far, up until this point, um, what emergency management personnel or resources of the city of Green Bay have been allocated in an emergency situation due to COVID?
We do not have, have any currently assigned, but, uh, through the months of March, April, May, and June, I had upwards of, um, ten or eleven of, of our fire staff assigned, uh, in various, uh, roles within the Emergency Operations Center and the Command Structure. Uh, there were, uh, several, uh, police, uh, officers from our PD as well, we had, um, we had Public Works directly involved, while not out there, they were certainly virtually, uh, activated. Um, we had, uh, obviously the Law Department, the Finance Department virtually activated, so that they were tracking expenses and things of that nature, so, uh, all of those things were going on, but actual physically presence, I would say, at, at the highest level, we probably had fifteen people uh, directly involved in the incident.
So many of the resources allocated locally have been through Brown County government and any other municipalities?
Yeah, there's been several, uh, you know, other, uh, you know, like DePere has involved, uh, uh, Village Howard. Um, I don't want to miss anybody, there, you know, several of the surrounding smaller communities had one or two people at various times, Bellevue had a, a couple of people, uh, in there, so, um, you know, just based on uh, their size and their availability, they had wanted to, uh, throughout, you know, the different times during, uh, the response.
Okay, any, uh, uh, as far as, uh, hospital resources, uh, health systems, are we at full capacity, or at what percentage capacity of our health systems in Green Bay?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, I can tell you that, uh, there, you know, I, I have a meeting every Monday with uh, Dr. McCarty, who is our Project Medical Director for all of our paramedics, uh, we meet every Monday morning. Uh, we have never been to the point where all of the ICU beds have been full, we are not at that point now, but I could not give you a percentage.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor, one question or two for the city attorney. I, I understand that the current resolution before us extends the state of emergency to December thirty-first. And, and Mayor, you've touched on this briefly, obviously, but in the past, we've, we've extended to the next meeting, and I know what's different now is that we're trying to assign some metrics to some gating criteria to not be in a state of emergency. But I guess, uh, my question for the city attorney is if it proves this, and we don't meet the criteria to remove ourselves from a state of emergency, uh, wh- this will not appear in our city council agenda, you know, in September, October, November? If we pass it today as presented, at December thirty-first, is it possible to see this on an agenda for vote?
I guess I'm a little confused by your question, so, as far as whether or not this will be in effect through the end of the year, if passed as is, the answer is yes, unless we hit that, that fourteen-day period of, uh, where we're declared low. Um, so, yes, but then you asked the second question about it being up for vote?
Yeah, I apologize, Attorney, I, I kind of, I wa- I was not clear in my question, the, the, what I'm trying to get at is that between now and December thirty-first, if we pass this today, there are a lot of big decisions that could come up, you know, namely the election. We have a November election that, uh, I, I just don't want the council to not have some critical issues related to the election, so, uh, Attorney Chavez, you answered my question, what I'm trying to get at, I guess is more of a statement to the council that if we pass this, it is possible that, that we do not have this on our agenda for a vote to overturn all the way until December thirty-first, potentially. Obviously, communication with the mayor and myself and the rest of the council is ongoing, but I just want to make sure we're clear, this extends it to December thirty-first. That's all. Go ahead.
You, sending the, you'd be extending the emergency declaration, any actions that's taken under the emergency, um, would still have to come back for council approval?
For the fact. Right, but, but I think Alder, we were just set after the thought. Anyways, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Alder. For the questions, comments? Hey, we do have a motion and a second on the floor to approve.
Could you use the board, please?
Absolutely. We'll use the board for the vote. Mayor, if you could please report my vote, as in no, Alder Johnson?
Alder Stoyer, can we get your vote?
I got it.
That passes six to, oh.
It says tie.
Tied six to six, so obviously I vote in favor of it. Um, so, it is successful. On to item four. Informationally only update and discussion on public access to city facilities and programs during COVID-nineteen. Director Folds?
So you have a, the document in there that outlines the facility access during COVID-nineteen? It really shows the, the status quo that we have right now, and then also the, um, the next steps based upon the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, their criteria, that the mayor talked about a little bit. So that, and that data is based upon the case rate, and also the trajectory, if it's shrinking or growing. So if the DHS determines that there's low COVID activity in Brown County, then we'll move to phase two, which is outlined in the document.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't know if I was gonna have to do a voter.
Assistant Director Manley?
No worries.
Go ahead.
So, so essentially moving to, uh, to, um, phase two, we'd be, um, open to the public, and I know Alder Vanderlees had a question. Um, and I guess, when we look at our city operations right now, I'm not really aware of any operations that have stopped. Um, I think we found different ways to provide the services to the public without them having access to the city hall. So if we have low COVID activity, um, for city hall, what that really means is that the public now has access to come in for services, and we do have cough guards set up, um, hand sanitizer and social distancing that's put in place. So what I see could be somewhat of a challenge is that if, if Brown County is deemed low COVID activity, um, we need to make sure we have the staff in place to handle the public coming in. So I don't see that as being a one-day turnaround, we might need a couple of days to make sure staff is in city hall and able to, um, accommodate the, the traffic that we have, so, really, um, if we assume that we have low COVID activity in Brown County, um, that just means that we're gonna have public access to city hall, that's what this document stated.
Questions based on, uh, that overview and the document itself? Okay. Saying that it is an informational item, so if there's not any more discussion, we will move along to resolutions. Uh, here, you know, the tenth resolution is state of emergency, so, uh, you know, makes sense maybe just to go, if there's a motion, to take up one through nine.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up one through nine.
Ten.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to suspend the rules, take up items one through nine with one roll call vote. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? You guys have it, the rules are suspended. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Mayor? This is, um, Director Ellenbecker, um, I have revised resolutions for seven and eight. We just got them. Um, yep, they were just sent today, there was a sale on the bonds, so the, the, there were shelves that were put in, into the council packet without pricing, so revised ones have been sent, so I would, I would, um, like the, uh, revised ones, the ones that were just sent out to be approved.
Right. Okay, do we need a, uh, any additional motion on that, Attorney Chavez, or is it acceptable as is?
Uh, to accept them as amended.
Motion to accept as amended.
Second.
Made to accept as, as amended, offered by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Vanderlees. And we will use the board. Alder Johnson, yes? Pass twelve oh, on to resolution ten.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. We've already had the discussion here, so if it's acceptable to council, we'll just move ahead to the board. Board me.
Alder Johnson, can I get your vote on this one?
No. No. As in, yes, you could have my vote, my vote is no.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm sorry, uh, Mayor, before you, uh, pull up the totals, was, this was on the vote of one to nine, or was this ten?
And it's ten.
And I, I want to be recorded as a no, I, I, I thought it was one to nine, I apologize. It is six, and I vote in favor. To break the tie. Time to ordinance this first and final reading for adoption.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
You may adopt item one with a roll call vote.
Motion was made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, you guys have it, it's been advanced to a final reading. Ordinance is first reading.
You may under-
On that last item, if I could please be recorded as an abstention, as the developer is on my executive committee.
Uh, and just, this is Attorney Chavez, just to clarify, the, I was understanding the roll call vote as, uh, allowing it to suspend the rules, the actual adoption that it needs to be, um, of, of, a roll call because it is an ordinance.
Good, okay, so we will use the board on item one, zoning ordinance number eleven dash twenty.
It'd be a motion to adopt, correct, not advance?
Correct, yeah.
I'm waiting on Alder Johnson and Alder Weary.
Alder Johnson is abstaining. I'm an abstention on that vote. That is eleven oh, with one abstention. On to ordinance's first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hey, you guys have it, the rules are suspended.
Motion to advance.
Second.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Stoyer, to advance items one through five to a second and final reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, you guys have it, may have been advanced to a final reading. Referral of petitions and communications. Alder Stoyer, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have a two. Uh, probably the INS committee, but a DPW in Parks needs to look at it. Uh, to look at the layout plan of the Green Bay Metro boat launch, to see if there are potential renovations or updates to enhance efficiencies of the facility. Also to take a look at Brown County uh, boat launch facilities, including the potential vacant Eagles Nest location on Nicolay Drive, as to how these may affect or enhance the Green Bay Metro boat launch location. Second one is also to INS, to review zoning code thirteen point five two one pertaining to fence location and height, in order to seek updates or revisions to increase the efficiency of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alders?
Mayor, I have one. Uh, for Parks, uh, for discussion with possible action on installing video security at city of Green Bay swimming pools.
Thanks, Alder. Any others?
Mayor, if I could, I, I, I should have mentioned this at, uh, on the announcements, but obviously many of us know the tragedy that happened at Colburn, just want it to be known to our lifeguard and everyone that witnessed that, that my thoughts and prayers go out to them, it's a very difficult situation, so I think we agree to that.
Yes, absolutely, thanks for passing that on, Alder. Any other communications?
The family and to the family of the deceased, obviously, and the deceased.
Yes. Other comments, or petitions, rather?
Motion to refer.
Motion made by Alder Scanell, seconded by Alder Dorf, to refer all petitions and communications to the proper authority, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, you guys have it, petitions and communications have been referred, adjournment?
Motion adjourn.
Second.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye de news.
See you later.
Aye.
Peace, all.
Bye. Good evening.